I should ask Ron Smith to make a welcome to our guest Rotarian, and then he will hopefully lead us in our song.
Be careful what you ask for. President Von Fellow Rotarians, we do have one visiting Rotarian today. She knows the drill. From the RB Sunrise Club, welcome Jean Russo. And now we will sing you and our other guests our Howdy Song.
Ron is such a great person. You know, whatever I need to do at the last minute, I can always look at him and he can do it, whatever it is. He can do what needs to be done at the last minute. So, okay, checking out here. We have a songster again, Dr. Grossman. And he has done a remarkable job with Home on the Range. This is the shortest version I have ever seen him write.
I didn't write it.
Oh, that's right.
Doctor Bill wrote it.
Oh, that's right.
But he's not here, so I'm going to sing it because Amber wouldn't sing it.
Okay, so this is in honor of Tara. Okay. The third district she leads with fine word and good deeds and focus to stop urban sprawl. Since her views are not stealth, she supports public health as a J D and a P H D U R. Larson Reamers her name and solving problems her gain. She comes from the beaches, but her influence reaches to our Rotary Club just the same. So I'm going to invite Doug to make the appropriate introductions here. Where did we go? And also, Tara, I'm giving you a copy of those words so that they will be part of your heritage from today's calendar day.
Thank you very much.
President Von Fellow Rotarians, it's, excuse me, my pleasure to introduce our former supervisor, who was moved coastally with the redistricting. However, Tara just told me that she, her doors are always open to responsive to any problems that we might have as well. She's really kind of a Renaissance woman, grew up in San Diego, bachelor's degree at Yale, her law degree and PhD from New York Institute, or pardon me, N Y. I, you, pardon me, yeah, I kept reading my own writing, sorry. I have a full scholarship. Our first job was 25 years ago, actually, with the San Diego City Council. Experiences include World Bank with climate financing, the United States Treasury Department as a senior advisor to the Obama administration, Sina with Amnesty International, has written several research books, professor of public policy at the graduate level, and now with the county board of supervisor. And we want to thank you for your service to Escondido and welcome you to Stan Bogdan. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for having me. Thank you all so much for having me. And I definitely want to reiterate, although we have gone undergone redistricting now and come 2024, there will be different lines. Until then, please feel free to call my office. We'll do anything I can for you all. And if I can't help, we'll make sure that my colleague who is in the fifth district, who will be taking over for Escondido, make sure that he doesn't drop the ball. So please, please do never hesitate to call the county if there's anything we can do at all for you. I'm really happy to be here. I, you know, as your song said, I do come from the beaches. I grew up surfing and kind of that was my childhood. But I'm a third generation San Diegan. My mom actually grew up in Vista and Oceanside, and she always talked about how she came to Escondido because that's where the, that was where the only, the only general store was in Escondido. So I remember, you know, the, the, the place that Escondido holds in our, in our collective memories and has always been an anchor for the northern part of San Diego County. And I certainly grew up knowing how important Escondido was, both as a business center and as well as an agricultural center, and also a cultural center for a lot of our communities here in our region. So thank you all for your leadership in making this community what it is, and thank you for your service. So I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been working on in the last year and change since I was elected at the county board of supervisors. And it really has been a sea change. I got elected and realized we had had a government that was frankly asleep at the wheel for nearly 40 years. And it was apparent in every conversation you had from the top to the bottom of the organization, where when you asked questions, tried to, you know, find out why things were being done the way they were being done, ask for a little bit of transparency or accountability. It was really shocking because that had never been the way that the county was run. And so we've been working really hard in the last year and I think two months now to try to bring our county, San Diego County, up to speed in order to deliver on what people really need in our region. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things I'm proudest of so far. One is our mobile crisis response teams. It's been a real problem that for, frankly, forever, if you called the police because someone was experiencing a mental and behavioral health crisis, an armed officer with a gun would show up. And they weren't trained, and you ended up with a lot of really tragic incidences, as well as people not getting the services they needed, when actually what they really needed was someone who knew how to deal with a person in, in crisis, showing up to deal with that crisis. And so we are now rolling out these mental and behavioral health specialists, these mobile crisis response teams all across the county, so that when you call 911, the dispatcher can help you assess, is it a mental, is it someone who needs crisis counseling, or is it a real public safety threat that needs an armed police response? So that's beginning to take off, beginning to get traction, and I think is beginning to show very early positive signs of success, little by little. Going with that arm in arm is our increased investment in crisis stabilization units and other places to put folks, especially folks experiencing homelessness, who up until now, they were just booked into jail. And then created this revolving door that was extremely expensive, because it costs about $80,000 a year to, to put someone in jail. But these people weren't getting better because they were basically being booked because they were, they were in crisis. So we've been starting to look at alternatives that can be much more efficient and effective at keeping people out of homelessness, stabilizing people who are experiencing mental and behavioral health crises, but also not just more effective and more humane for the individual, but also fundamentally more cost efficient in the long run. Because it costs about $30,000 a year if you were going to look at some of these alternatives to incarceration, like supportive housing units with social services versus $8,000 a year if you have people in jail. So that's another thing that I think is long, long overdue, is trying to figure out how to actually help people who are in crisis and keep them out of our criminal justice system, and also save the taxpayers money. So then I want to talk a little bit about one of my pet projects. One of the first things I moved forward when I was elected was our new office and our new chief evaluation officer, our Office of Data and Accountability and Evaluation. As I said, we've had a county for a really long time that was just sort of business as usual, and you had 18,000 employees, a $7 billion budget, without a lot of sort of critical self-reflection on whether we're actually making the difference that we hope to make with the programs that we're spending our money on. So this new office and this new chief evaluation officer, in the process of being hired right now, is going to be able to do the hard work of looking at what's working, what's not working in our programs across the county, everywhere, in everything from homelessness and homelessness solutions, to foster care, to any of our, our work programs, our public health programs, being able to take a really hard data-driven look at these programs and so we can scale up successes and learn from setbacks. And this is a perspective I bring from the time I spent as an academic. As was mentioned, I was for many years a researcher, my PhD is in political economy, and spent quite a bit of my career working with governments on the research side and helping them do program evaluations, helping them bring data to informed decision-making in what's commonly called evidence-based policymaking. And I was frankly shocked when I got to our county of San Diego and I found out we don't do evidence-based policymaking. I'm thinking, well, what kind of policymaking do we do? We just stick our finger in the wind? And I think there's been a little bit of that for a lot too long. So it's, it's great to have the support of my fellow board members to start bringing a much more rigorous evidence-based approach to the work that we're doing to serve our community here in San Diego County. Another thing I want to talk about, and by the way, I'm going to just throw a lot at you because we've been real busy for the last 15 months, and then I'm going to have some time for questions and answers. Another thing I've been very focused on is our regional decarbonization and green jobs plan. So I think all of us every day were inundated with the news on our, on climate change. And personally, as the mother of a two and a half year old, I think a lot about what is this planet that we're leaving to her? You know, we're leaving her a planet that has wildfires that aren't in season but are every season, where we no longer have a fire season, because there's always fires at all times across California, where we have rising sea levels and our entire coastal economy is under threat, where our agricultural economy is really, really damaged because of weather fluctuations, wild rainstorms, heat waves. So it's, 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 it's an urgent problem. I think we all know that. But the question for a long time has been, well, we're just San Diego County. What, what can we do about it? Isn't that something that those big guys in Copenhagen and Oslo should be negotiating? And I'll tell you, as a person who spent much of my career in Washington and in New York and spent my time in Europe as well, I think that the leadership has to come from the local level. I think we are the ones who have to make those tough decisions because the rubber really hits the road, quite literally, here in our community. It's very hard to make those big, you know, international deals. And in the end of the day, how are they enforced anyway? But we can make those decisions here and try to set a model for other counties and other regions to follow. And so that's what we're doing. We are taking a regional approach to climate action, a regional approach to green jobs. We're looking holistically at San Diego County. Instead of treating Escondido and Encinitas and San Diego and Chula Vista and Vista like they're in silos, we are acknowledging that actually we are a regional economy and we need to tackle this challenge together. So we have put, we have begun to put in motion the process of developing this regional decarbonization plan that's looking holistically at everything from land use to, to energy production to transit, across all of these different sectors, to create an action plan that could really get us to zero carbon by 2035. The flip side of that, and I think this is really important and to me is a paramount priority, is that we are not going to decarbonize our economy on the backs of a few individuals who get left out and left behind. It is wrong and it is not fair. So one of the most important priorities for me, as we think about how we decarbonize San Diego County, is that we do it in a way that puts equity first, do it in a way that puts working families first, do it in a way that puts green jobs first, so that we are not going to be looking at cutting jobs and cutting industries unless we can be darn well sure that we have better opportunities for people on the other side. And I think for a long time, there's been talk about those kinds of green transitions, but it hasn't, it hasn't really been there. And so that's what we're trying to do here in San Diego, is to, to be really granular about those kinds of investments and make sure that we really have a plan. So we've been working on that. It's coming back to the board in March, and then again in June, and then again in August. And as part of this, since we're only a county, we're only one government, we're going to need help from Mayor Mack, we're going to need help from our mayors in all our other cities to come together around this. So we're also going to be putting together a coordinating body to coordinate action on our, our decarbonization and green jobs plan. And that's what's going to be happening over the next two or three years as we move towards putting the, the research into action. One of the things I'm most excited about this, I think it's part of what I, I bring to this job and what I think we have to do more of here in San Diego, is looking at best practices nationally and internationally. So the folks who put art together, our plan, are global experts. They had been working with governments worldwide. They were my former colleagues when I was on faculty at UCSD. And so I recruited them. I said, look, you know, I know you all are doing a lot of plans for Kenya and Namibia and Fiji and Indonesia, but we need you here in San Diego County. Can you guys put a plan together for San Diego County? So they brought their best, they brought their A game, and they've been working for us, which is great. And I think we now have an A game plan that we can be, that we can be moving towards over the next coming years. Also want to little, talk a little bit about the work we've been doing for small businesses. This was one of the first things I moved forward on when I was elected as well. We all know that the COVID pandemic hit really unevenly, and some people, especially small business owners, were very disproportionately impacted, had to shut their doors, had to lay off employees. And of course, we had the federal plan, the Paychecks Protection Program, but there's a lot of local businesses that couldn't qualify, or if they did qualify, they couldn't get the amount of relief they needed. I was particularly focused on the businesses that couldn't qualify, that were being left out and left behind from the federal program. So we put together a small business stimulus grant program and have been rolling that over, out over the last year. And we've now helped thousands and thousands of local businesses who would have had to shut their doors permanently because of business loss during COVID. And I think we are now, through that, I think the, at least the, through the, the economic crisis part of the pandemic and out the other side for the most part, and just doing what we can to make sure that everyone makes it out the other side and nobody gets left behind. And that's been a huge priority for me and my team. Likewise, you know, obviously, small business, the small businesses have taken a real hit, but also a lot of our renters. And we know that there's been some small landlords who also were unable to collect rent because people couldn't pay their rent due to COVID, renters who couldn't pay their rent. And so we have a small landlord assistance program, as well as a renter assistance program, that's been a really vital lifeline for folks across the county to get through the other side during COVID. We also have been doing quite a bit of work on homelessness. I started this talking a little bit about homelessness. I want to talk a little bit more about that. I just passed a new program that's going to be rolled out over the next 18 months for a senior rent subsidy for homeless individuals who are seniors who are at risk of homelessness. So the idea of this program is that over a quarter of the homeless individuals in our community are people over 55. That's a pretty striking number. 25% of the homeless individuals in our community are people over 55. And a quite considerable number of individuals, we believe, could be prevented from being homeless in the first place with a shallow rent subsidy, which just means it's basically bridge money to pay the rent for a couple of months to avoid eviction while people get organized, get their house in order. And so we're looking at approximately $300 a month as a shallow rent subsidy for seniors facing homelessness, which is a significant savings over what happens when someone is homeless, which ends up being about $2,500 a month of costs to the county. So my attitude is let's keep people in their homes, let's keep people housed, let's, let's do what's right for the, for people who are, who are down on their luck and facing hard times, but let's also do what's smart and what, and what saves us money and make sure that our, our tax dollars are making the biggest impact that they can in our community. So those are, that is one of our big homeless projects that we're working on. Another thing that I'm pretty excited about is we're taking a look at county-owned land and seeing, you know, where there might be a need for more homelessness services. And so that's a big thing, and, and looking at a huge inventory of all our county-owned land and seeing where we might be able to put more homeless services, because obviously this is a big crisis that we face here in San Diego County. Like I said, I'm just going to throw a bunch of stuff at you because we've been really busy, but I promise we'll have time for questions. Also want to talk a little bit about the federal infrastructure bill. This is big news, big money passed in Congress, and we are doing our part to get our fair share of those resources. One of my big priorities, and this is, I think, counterintuitive and comes as a surprise to a lot of folks, is stormwater. We have huge problems with a lot of pollution that's just flowing out into our streets and flowing into their drains and polluting our rivers, polluting our agricultural land and polluting our beaches and coastlines. And that's because we have not ever really had adequate investment in stormwater treatment. So I'm definitely pushing hard to make sure that we can invest in our stormwater system to keep our ecosystem here in San Diego clean. Also really pushing on transportation money. That's a big issue, and we think that there's a lot of opportunities to get funding for more transportation dollars. And we're still waiting from Congress on guidance on exactly what kind of projects we can put in the pipeline, but we have a whole list of different projects that we're going to have in the pipeline. So whatever that pipeline looks like, we can be first coming in when that, when those floodgates open. So that's something that is really important because it's very rare that we get that kind of opportunity we have with the federal infrastructure package to be able to go and actually deliver on some of these big investments that have been neglected for a really, really long time in our community. So I think I could keep, like I said, I could keep talking at you, but why don't I just stop there and open the floor for questions and see what's on your mind and where, where you want to take the conversation? Sir in the blue, that's you. So that's why I mentioned this inventory we're taking of county-owned land, of places that we could build more housing. It's vital. We don't have the, we don't have the places for people to go. And this, like I said, a lot of individuals end up in jail. And I actually was just talking to the DA Friday, and she said if we could figure out some more housing, she thinks she could keep about 9,000 people a year out of our county jails, who are being put in jail basically just because they have nowhere else to put them. So housing is a huge piece. The guardianship piece, frankly, I think that's a conversation the mayor's having, Todd Glora, not our mayor, but, you know, I, I think that's outside of my purview and the county, we don't really get to set the rules around guardianship, but we do get to make decisions about, you know, where we build and how we provide services for our homeless population. A woman in black. So it's a great question. Let me talk a little bit about the mental health side of things. It's a, like I said, I've learned a lot in the last, you know, 15 months since I took this job, and it's astonishing how neglected our investments in mental health have been in this county. It's shameful. We have in our, in our emergency facilities where people get put when they're having a mental health crisis, about 60% of those individuals are ready to be moved to a step-down facility, but they can't move them because there's no step-down facility available. So they're being kept in, basically in the psych ward, where they're now taking beds from other individuals in acute crisis because we don't have the step-down facilities for them. So there's a massive gap in that. So that's the step-down. And then after a step-down facility, which would still be pretty high levels of care, then there's still a huge need for supportive housing, which doesn't have the same level of nursing facilities and care facilities, but certainly provides support, counseling, crisis management. And we, we have very few beds in any kind of permanent supportive housing. So when I'm talking about homeless housing, I'm really talking about this permanent supportive housing piece of the ladder. We have another initiative that we've been working on to basically take some of the Medi-Cal money that is going nowhere, that we are, should be getting in, in San Diego County, and use those funds to build the step-down facilities. Because our entire continuum of care in mental and behavioral health, I mean, honestly, it's, it's, it's in bad shape. It's in really bad shape. Yes, there, sir? Some of them are really small. They're like, like you said, the storm grates. Then there's, there's other much bigger facilities where you would have the stormwater run into a marsh that's planted with plants that are really good at taking toxic waste and taking waste, especially nitrogen-heavy and carbon-heavy waste out of the water, and then cleaning it naturally with the plants. So that's my, that's the thing I'm most excited about because then it also becomes a beautiful green space. But you really have kind of a continuum, everything from these like big marshes to these really small, kind of more technical interventions with how you, how the stormwater runs and then is, then you would, you put in filtration devices along the, along the stormwater path. Yes? Yes. The, when you're looking at the marshes, they usually put in a, like a filter before water gets there to capture the bigger matter. And then the marshland is really dealing with mostly the nitrogen and the other contaminants that are in the water that are at a molecular level. Santa La Joa, yes. They are, actually. They're doing a big lagoon restoration now, and that's a piece of the work. So I think, and we need more of that, frankly. I mean, it's, and it's expensive. It's very expensive to do those kinds of restoration projects. Sir in the jean jacket. I love the jean jacket. I think what, what I really appreciated about this decarbonization report that our friends at UCSD and USD put together, is it, it basically was a zero, a zero-dollar pathway to decarbonization because it was graduated. They didn't do it all at once. So basically, what they, what they were, what, what they have proposed is we look at some of our cheapest sources of energy that we could bring online now, like solar in San Diego is in particular, we're very fortunate because it, we have San Diego, so we're much luckier, and that you can bring some of these big solar plants online. We also could have about 20% of our energy could be coming from rooftop solar, if more people had rooftop solar. So there's some big wins that are in the more near term that are very cost efficient. And then, so that gives you a pathway and a timeline. And then, so that gives you a pathway and a timeline to look at improving efficiency of battery storage and energy production over the next 10, 15 years, so that when we start looking at some of the more expensive shifts, that we're not, that we've increased our efficiency, but more importantly, that we're not looking to replace items that are functioning. So for example, this is a very, like a visceral example, we wouldn't go and just like all buy new electric cars. Instead, you wait, you use your car to the end of your car's lifetime, and it's just then you replace the vehicle that you move to a green vehicle. So a lot of the expense is in decommissioning working machinery too soon before it reaches its natural end, it's a lifetime. But if you're going to wait until it reaches its natural end of its lifetime, and then when you do the replacement, you're replacing it green, then you would have had a replacement cost anyway. So the two, two big ways in which you save a lot of money and when we think about this transition is one, we do the easy things now, and we're waiting a little bit for the technology to catch up in like the next 15 years for some of the things that might be more difficult, when we think the technology will be more efficient. And secondly, we're not just scrapping perfectly fine-working cars and, and other vehicles and other equipment, we're waiting until it would need to be replaced in any case, so we're not incurring an extra cost. So I think that's very, I thought that was very insightful. I think what's interesting on the car front, you know, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, right? Like, nobody wants to move to an electric vehicle if they can't charge their vehicle. So that is something that is an upfront cost in terms of building electric vehicle charging stations, and that's one of the projects that is most highly prioritized with the federal infrastructure bill. So we think we're going to be able to build a good number over the next five to 10 years of the electric vehicle charging stations that we need in order to make it more, frankly, make it a cost savings for the individual to move in that direction, because they'll be able to get much less expensive electric energy from the EV chargers rather than rising gas prices. Yes. I really appreciate it. Tijuana River Valley, right? We have this massive pollution problem in the Tijuana River Valley, and as if folks haven't spent much time down there, basically that whole river valley is polluted. There's a ton of sewage runoff that's coming from Tijuana, and then it flows out into Ib, and then it flows up the whole coast. So it does affect our whole county because honestly, the entire coastline, frankly, up to Orange County, is impacted by the sewage runoff in Tijuana. It's also an environmental catastrophe. I mean, if you go there, it's just, it kind of will blow your mind. So I really appreciate the question. I think, I'll probably answer this question differently than most of my colleagues. I think my colleagues would say we're doing great. We have secured a bunch of support from the federal government to do a massive cleanup in Tijuana, in the Tijuana River Valley over the next five years. And the money's been secured, they've signed it, it's starting to move. My view is it's not enough, because I really think we need a strategy that's about how do we help Tijuana build a better sewage treatment system in Tijuana? Because if we don't do that, then, you know, we fix the problem today and it's back tomorrow. And I would much prefer, you know, having spent a lot of my career working on global development issues and global economic issues, I would much prefer to help Tijuana fix their sewage problem, so then we don't get what runs downstream, rather than just fix it once it's in our own backyard. But I think that's a bit of an unorthodox view. Other questions? Do you have time for one more? One more? Oh, we get two more, right there. So I'll tell you a story. I was, I had a, a report came back to the Board of Supervisors last two weeks ago, and it was a terrible report. I'm sorry. I mean, I have a PhD, I know how to write a research report. I read it. I think they were surprised someone actually read it. I looked at the methodology, the survey methodology, sample bias problems in the survey methodology, there was leading question problems, there was assumptions in the, in the modeling that were not right. I mean, it was, honestly, if a student had given me this paper, I'd be like, you're no, you don't pass. It was bad. And I was frustrated, and everyone thought I was incredibly mean, because I asked questions that poked a hole in the report, and then everyone thought I was so mean to, to county staff for asking mean questions. So, yeah, this is not, it's, it's an uphill battle. I don't know, Cipriano, was I mean? Well, I really want to thank you all again for having me here today, and thank you all for your service to Escondido.
Well, so, we do appreciate, Tara, your remarks today, and Cipriano, thank you for joining with us as well. We will now move into our normal program. You're welcome to stay and enjoy whatever you like. All right. Okay, so at this point, looking at member moments, the only one I'm aware of is Donna Johnson. Some of you heard that she was in a hit-and-run incident, and her car was badly damaged, but apparently her injuries were not severe, but she's kind of got some challenging things to deal with, and so I invite you to give her your thoughts as well. Some announcements. Larry Troutner, would you come up and spend a little bit of time on the rotating meeting agenda? And then Bob Dweedler? I thought I saw him. Okay, good. Yeah, he will come up and share some thoughts about the Afghan Refugee Service Program.
Thank you, Von, fellow Rotarians. We have an exciting program this year. It really shows the diversity of our club, I think. We have two different partnerships that we're going to be talking about, the San Pascal Academy, where Keith is going to lead a group out there, and the, well, the Interfaith Community Services, we're so involved with Haven House there. So we got the, on one side of the coin, we have those partnerships we have, the service organizations, nonprofits we deal with. The other side, we have City Hall with our politicians. Another side, we have the arts side with the stone and glass. And then finally, Joe is going to staff, this is again agreed, to do a demonstration and have us all make some, help him make some toys for kids at his woodch, woodworking shop. So a good cross-section of different places to go on March 8th. There'll be a signup sheet distributed soon, right, Andy? Yeah? And we're going to have the 10 to 12 people at each one, so it's first come, first served. So be sure to sign up.
So for you who are not aware, Vocational Committee is responsible for the particular program here for rotating meeting, and Larry is the director, the chairman of the Vocational Committee. So then, Bob, if you would join us? And just as a tip, if you, if you want to get a certain place, when you get that email, don't sit on it, because you may be out of, out of luck.
Good afternoon, President Von, fellow Rotarians. Our district is partnering, partnering with the San Diego Women's Foundation to raise $30,000 or more to support Afghan refugee resettlement here in San Diego County. That's an ongoing effort over the next many months. Our International Service Committee for our club has already allocated $1,500 from our annual budget to support that, and I would like all of our members to think long and hard and reach into their pockets and help us match that, so that we can contribute even more money to the effort. And so I'm going to kick it off by saying I'm going to pledge $100 of my own money to that. Checks need to be made payable to the Escondido Rotary Foundation, so you can send them to Christine Montan or give them to me, and then we'll combine that with the donation from our club International Service Committee to really help support the, because we've got thousands and thousands of Afghan refugees who are coming here to San Diego, because we have an open and tolerant society with many military members who benefited greatly from the help of our Afghan allies during the past 20 years. So please consider it, and thank you very much.
Bob, is there a timetable on getting those commitments to you? Two weeks. I'll add 500. You know, I've seen those videos, everybody has seen those videos, and although there may be problems in amidst all of this refugee, I've seen so many good things being done by many, many charitable organizations and rotaries at, and should be up at the top of that list. So I would invite you to think about that. Coming meetings? Samuel Popkin next week, then the rotating meeting that you need to sign up for. Mayor Mack is going to be giving us the State of the Union, a State of the City, and then Joe Casalingi at the end of the month. Amy, Amber, strike that. Amber Smith is going to make an announcement. I think you recognize the picture.
So this special naming may surprise some folks, because it's actually going to be someone who is renamed. Only someone with a legacy as strong as this person could get an even stronger name. So I'd like to, I'd like to welcome up Ron Smith. Ron is our Rotary Rock. He's been Executive Secretary for 10 years, but also he is like the rock of Gibraltar, in that he has become an icon, a symbol of fortitude and determination to take on a job, do it the best of his ability, and see it through. This was evident from his recent idea to construct desks for students experiencing remote learning from their living rooms. He built a team, secured the materials, and made it happen. He's admired for his strong, steady determination in all the projects he's taken on, not only as our club executive treasury for a decade, but also for his charitable activities as a board member for the activities with his, board member for the Salvation Army, his tireless work with his fraternity at San Diego State, and his volunteer activities with his church. He quietly rocks our world every day in his faith and his community outreach. Ron, you may have been a hippie in another generation, but in this century, you are the rock to so many. Be forever knighted as the rock.
And thank you, Amber. And I don't know about you, but he really looks good in that. I would like to suggest, Ron, that you wear that uniform occasionally, and let us enjoy that, that on you as well. I think it would look great. And Irv, did you put this together? Probably, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Let's see, where's Sandy? Sandy's going to come up and make a presentation as well. That's a very special presentation, for sure.
Thank you, President Von and fellow Rotarians. I would like to welcome Paul Van Eldren up to the dais. Paul is one of those Rotarians who is here every Tuesday, and then when he goes out into the community, he carries on what every Rotarian has in their heart. He actually does it. Paul, for your experienced caring, comfort, calming direction, and hope that you bring to those in our community with cancer, we of the Rotary Club of Escondido honor your selfless giving to those in their darkest days. You are a very special Rotarian. And Paul also gets the Escondido in Pictures book. Thank you so much.
I was also a Crayonist member, and he's serving in a lot of other areas. Big surprise.
Thank you. I'm glad it was a surprise.
Okay, I still think we're going to get out early today, and let me commend everybody. We are almost at another record on attendance with the 12 people from the Zoom family, and thank you for being with us again, all you Zoomers. This was offered by Keith Rickenbacher in the CenterView. Please take advantage of reading Chorito's weekly masterpiece. She really does a remarkable job. And I guess, Keith, you decided to add to that this last week, and I want to read this about community service. "Every Rotary Club and every Rotarian assumes a responsibility to find ways to improve the quality of life for those in their communities and to serve the public interest. When those efforts are effective, they are not only, they not only contribute to the greater good, they also promote Rotary's positive image. What makes a community service effort effective? Relevance. A community service project must address a real, current community concern or issue. Rotary Clubs should start by surveying their communities to find out where help is needed. Once a club has listened to its community, it can begin to envision effective responses to problems." I salute the members of this club who have responded to that challenge in the past, and also those who've supported this year's activities. For example, Larry Troutner stepped in when we were given an opportunity to support Compact and the community with the youth tennis program. And that has gone through its maturation stages, the painful process of getting things put together. We have the city united with us in supporting this, and with Compact and other things, so it's a community-wide effort. That, to me, is an example. This was triggered by some observations from some people with the tennis second serve, and these are some local folks that put together a giveaway of tennis equipment, and now that's spread throughout the community into Compact, into the city. And that's an example, to me, of how we as a club can respond. I think Larry is a critical element, having made this happen. Isn't it strange that one, one person becomes the seed, and everybody else helps it grow, and then we all benefit? We then met as presidents and coming presidents with Compact, with their leaders, and had a great discussion about how we as a club could support education compact beyond the tennis initiative. And so out of that meeting, we have turned out to, Larry sent out an invitation to club members to find out who in our membership would be willing to give some effort to supporting education compact in the amazing work they do, especially focused on our Latino families here, and giving them an op- and giving them an opportunity to grow and develop, particularly in the youth. So out of that email, we had a person volunteer to become the chair. Joe Stanford. Joe, stand up. Where are you? You have an opportunity to support Joe in his efforts in leading the club to find ways to meet the needs of Education Compact. This is an organization that supports half of the community in a very real sense. So already, I want to add thanks to Alex Galinas, Ron Giles, Kristin Gaspar, Christy Knight, and Anne Stefieri, who also responded and said they want to be part of this club effort to support. Did anybody else respond that I didn't get? Okay, so Joe will be asking and inviting as he meets with Compact leaders. And they will come up with some suggestions, and we'll transition in as people are willing and able to support the program. Well, there are some fun things. And having worked with Compact for the past six years, it's a rich experience. My involvement came in through the Project Hero, where we work with young people who've encountered a problem with the law. And rather than let them get kind of persuaded into the wrong crowds, these people who are in Project Hero bond with these young men and find ways to help them find a father or grandpa image or whatever. They're going to expand this program into families. So I think you're going to see some real fun things generated. I just really appreciate Joe and his willingness to kind of be the leader for us. That concludes our business for this week. I apologize for getting you out early. I know some of you really depend on this re-energizing. Does she need a mic? Yeah, hand her a mic. I should salute my good wife, because she's also been a supporter of Interfaith in a very effective program they have of counseling with those who encounter some problems.
So, can you hear me? Oh, sorry. But there's an apartment building, a rather large complex, next to the Juniper School that just sent out 16-day notices to their tenants saying that they're either going to demolish or remodel, and everybody has to leave. Well, the rent on that place was maybe $1,000, maybe even less, maybe a little more, depending on who. So my acquaintance is there, a Vietnamese lady, 65, with her disabled daughter, got this notice. So they go out looking for a place to live, and there isn't any place that's $1,000 a month. There just isn't. So fortunately, I knew about Interfaith and took them down there. As we go down and we talk to them, they say, "Oh, yeah, we have volunteers that can help with this. Yeah, we have volunteers that can help with that. We have volunteers that can help with this." So talk about relevance. And I think that we probably, a lot of us, could be volunteering then and helping with some of their needs, as well, of course, as I know that we donate money to them. And I appreciate, though, that in a new way, this effort to avoid homelessness, I mean, it's big. When you've got all of these people now, there are probably a lot of them in the same boat as my friends. How are you going to come up with that much more money each month to pay the rent? Thank you.
There's certainly a lot of need. Greg Angel, I salute him and all of the people at Interfaith Services. They're doing a great job. And Kelly Cloud, who leads us in our twice-a-month feeding program at Haven House, is another one. We have a lot of wonderful people that are committed to service. Anyway, so the invitation is out. Those who want to get involved with Compact, that's one direction. We have so many others to go. Thank you all for your dedication. Meeting adjourned.